The Warren County Board of Football Commissioners, I have a motion to approve the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Are there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Would you please stand his time, please?
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Are there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Student advisory?
Well, congratulations for some of the members of the football team that were selected into Region 3 to 6A of football. Isaiah Grace, Lick Institute, Craig McLeary, Saint Mexico, Xavier O'Gier, Deandre Thomas, and Devon Jordan. Congratulations to the football team for placing first at the Smoky Mountain Christmas Championship. And congratulations to the wrestling team and I, Dylan Times, for placing fourth in this weekend's tournament. For the choir, they have sounded the season's December 12th, tickets for $10. Forty-eight members of the select ensemble will travel to Florida to perform in his candlelight session. The band's annual Christmas concert is Monday, December 11th at 6:00 PM in the Park Theater, tickets are also $10. There will be a holiday open house with the Community Connections Transition Program on Friday, December 15th, from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. The NHS members will be providing stockings and assistance with the Christmas party for the kids of the community on December 23rd at the Bridge Don't Act Boxing Center. And concerns that have been brought to student advisory attention, which should be addressed by the school board, is special education plus rent doesn't have an awning and makes weather days a struggle for students with needs in the pre-K program. It forces a lot of students to miss school days. And we would ask that the board provide estimates on placing an awning in this area. Also, an awning can be placed on bus ramps since the construction of the facility, the awning for the bus riders has been removed and not replaced. And some of the kids were in bad weather for 30 minutes in the afternoon. Refresh crosswalk, road paint, larger pedestrian signs, city placement in Hickory Creek and to special education plus rent areas. These areas are heavily used by students of the high school and elementary school. And also traffic anytime penalty yield for these students. Fill with the installation for new road paint, larger pedestrian road signs, and possible sign directly in front as they could recruit tenant crosswalks to prevent accidents. Also, the pedestrian crossing sign needs to be placed at Community Connections and crosswalk for that area could be updated as well.
When did we address some of these issues about the awning where it was removed and where it was placed?
Well, I talked to Mr. Walker about the bus issue. And, you know, a lot of times there are special education buses, the smaller buses, can come in through the teacher parking lot area on rain days by the band room. There's an awning there, so they can go in that route and go in. So, you know, he said that's an opportunity that, you know, he can look at that. I mean, we've been looking at the awning on that other end for the bigger buses, because we can't turn the big bus in that short parking area.
Well, they actually, I believe they talked, spoke with someone at the bus shed and they were told that even the small buses, the cars that are part of it, they can't do that.
Okay.
In the teacher.
In the teacher, yeah.
And there's an issue with the no windows in the hallway for some of the students.
Okay, okay, yeah. We can, you mean, we hadn't talked since then. The, and then the construction, you know, the awning, there's still a partial awning there and then a new awning on the new part of the building on the back. But, yeah, that's something we can take a look at and get some estimates on, you know, completing that awning there. You know, the painting part, you know, nobody's ever brought that to my attention, but we can do that through maintenance. We can repaint the crosswalks, it just takes some work order to do that. So, we can get that done and new signage, I just didn't know it was a need. So, we can take care of that.
I think that signage, I mean, all these concerns are very important, but I think that signage, you know, we need, we need to get more visibility.
Right, yeah. And that is a, it's a hectic, you know, there's a bridge there, you know, to cross. And, you know, there's a crosswalk set up, but, you know, a lot of times parents are already hectic in the afternoons for sure. So, but I appreciate that, we'll take care of that.
Best reports ever.
Yeah, very comprehensive one.
Okay, recognition.
Tonight I'd like to recognize Ms. Christie Farless by telling her, and I kind of do this in a different way because she's an LEA teacher, she'll appreciate this, just for the hours you spend, for the attention you give, for the knowledge that you pass on, for your special touch, offering guidance to students and staff, the time you spend planning, because I do notice, and the effort you make along with the chances you take. So Christie truly deserves to be recognized as employee of the month for Warren County. Any given Sunday, you'll find Christie at school. If you did anything or you've forgotten anything, Christie's there every Sunday. She works hard to do that with her students and the planning. And I really do appreciate everything that she does. You're welcome.
Wanted to, since Ms. Council's here and I know Ms. Council has to leave, go back to the tournament. So, I called her today, Autumn went to a meeting today in the Kohler Center. And as we, if you would like to stand up, we'll just unveil that today. So, from the Tennessee Department of Education, you guys can take that back to your school. And appreciate, yeah, you can get right behind that. And we knew Morrison had been awarded reward school status. And just proud that we got the banner and now you can display that proudly. Morrison Elementary. We even replaced the interior.
We actually were one, we didn't know we were going to get that. We canceled by the time.
Wanted to congratulate you on that.
Thank you all so much for supporting everything that we do. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
So I want to also, or door. No, go ahead.
I'm happy. Miss May is?
No, you can say you want. We appreciate you coming. Yes, sir, you too, you too. And also have good news that we want to make sure that we get out tonight. When we had our data report, you know, we said that Dibrel Elementary had qualified for a reward school, but, you know, they didn't have the numbers in special ed to exit. So, I've been in conversation with the commissioner and we've been going back and forth. And we sent them our data. And I received this just last night saying, Bobby, I have excellent news for you. We will identify Dibrel Elementary as a reward school for 2016-17 after review of the data. I will be sending you an official letter, we will order your banner as well. Once the letter is sent, we will update the status on the website. Congratulations, Commissioner Candace. We're proud of Dibrel and the work that they've done. And as I said, they were on focus status in 2014. And since then have worked to not only come off of focus status, but re-recognize as a reward school. And I think that's the first time that I can remember in my tenure here that we've had two reward schools in the same year. So, very proud of Carl and Autumn and the work that they do for our district and our principals and everybody involved. So, we need to get that out in public. Lisa left us, so Mr. Zach, we need to do a little article, maybe we can get a little intervention.
Well, I think we should, the first time in history to have two reward schools. Mr. Chairman, I know from the curriculum and achievement committee, we certainly would heartily commend everybody that had a hand in that. You know, from the instructional leaders, teaching and learning side, principals, of course, the teachers and the parents. But I want to commend Bobby also for being so persistent in making sure justice was done, because that was a very perverse kind of rule that the State Department had that produced perverse results.
Right.
And I'm glad you got that correct, you brought that to Commissioner's attention.
We stayed on topic and I had a lot of help, so Candace provided a lot of data. We tried to stay, I tried to email about it every week till we got an answer. So, we finally got an answer.
Well, there's a few things quite as bitter as really winning and deserving the prize and then having it denied because of some arcane rules that nobody really understands.
I was texting, she's out of town. And that's why Monty and Michelle are not here tonight as well. They're all at a Title I conference. So, just wanted to text her, told her as soon as it was public. And I would let her know so she could let her staff know. So, I wanted to do that, but appreciate that. Appreciate you all's help, you know, as well. You know, if we all hadn't served in your capacity, we wouldn't get there either. So, we're proud of that. So, hopefully next year we'll have two more. Or the same ones and two more.
Okay, I guess we're ready for the operational.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item, on the use of state test data for report cards. We, last year, as you're probably aware, there's not, I'm trying to find the statute that Robin pulled for us. Statute 491617 stated that if LEAs did not receive student TCAP scores at least five instructional days before the end of school, then the LEA may choose not to use student TCAP scores and students' final grades for math, English, language arts, science, and social studies. So, last year we didn't receive our scores back in time. And, you know, I think everybody understands and knows that we still haven't gotten our report card out. And they've been very late getting things in. So, this year, the scores for high school, I think, were, and for the spring testing, are supposed to be in by May the 22nd possibly. And then our elementary scores, I think, are not supposed to be received until June. So, we have, you know, I've talked with Autumn and Carl and we've talked with all of our staff. And, you know, if we're going to get them back that late into schools on the 25th, we see no reason to hold report cards and we don't know if we'll get them back, you know. So, this would be my recommendation that we, you know, don't hold report cards and hold everybody up waiting on that to get that data that we don't know will come in. So, you know, our recommendation would be to not use that data for student grades because we don't get it back within the statute or statute timeline. So, I've got to fill out a report to go to the State Department by December 22nd. So, I just need, you know, the board's approval to not use those scores if the board agrees not to use the scores, because truthfully, we don't know if we'll get them back.
Mr. Chairman, this has been a long-going problem and the state hasn't got it solved yet. And that may have something to do with the testing vendors, the private sector. But I think we all understand the problem and the issue. So, I want to move that we adopt Mr. Cox's recommendation to not include those scores in the report card.
Okay, have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. I know everybody will be happy about that. They don't want kids coming back in July to get their report card.
And it might be hard to get some of them.
It might be. And if that's if we get them, the scores in. And that's, that. In your packet, we, Robin and worked on, and I've kind of been working on continuing the progress we've made on third-party benefits for staff. And we had met with, First National Bank was one that was interested in maybe retirement benefits for teachers and staff members. And there's other businesses that are interested in doing that too. So, we developed an RFP to go out to receive proposals to see what kind of retirement plan benefits might be out there for staff. There's, you know, really not any obligation on us, but to really review the proposals and see if we could offer that to staff for retirement benefits. But I wanted to get your approval, or to see if that's something that you would want to proceed with for staff members.
So currently, they don't have anything like a 401K or anything like that?
No, not even 401K. We used to, we have some 403B, you know, opportunities, things of that type. But they're just scattered. They're not, there's not really any real program or plan, kind of like what we did with Scott Hale's office. So, teachers can still do that, you know, they can still go to Edward Jones or First National or wherever. But if there's an opportunity that maybe we could get a package together that might be better, then we thought we would take a look at it and see.
What would we, just, we just, third-party, just get the information to them and then?
Yeah, what we would do, we would put it out, much like a V, is that we would ask for proposals. We would bring those proposals back, we would, you know, let the board take a look at those proposals.
Typically, your 401K contributions are pre-tax.
Which is why we have to do it from the employer's standpoint. They can't do that on their own, to get the tax benefit.
So, we just thought it would be a benefit to employees. It really wouldn't cost us any money. And they could choose, you know, and there may be more than one.
Well, I know over the years, there have been several vendors. And we talked about this and that is beginning to narrow.
It is, yeah. It is narrowing and what we've done with Scott being our broker and now having USA Boy as our third-party insurance provider has really helped a lot. Because not only are the benefits better, but they're more cost-effective. And we're getting more participation now than we've had before. And it's not scattered into a bunch of companies. So, we've taught you right, we've talked about that a couple of times. We've been working on it and this will just be the next step, if you want us to do that.
Would you offer this in addition to what we've had, or would you want employees to convert? I mean?
No, I don't think we, and we didn't do that with the insurance benefits. They could still keep what they had. But, you know, what we did was just kind of, you know, put that out there, allow them to be competitive and decide what they wanted to do. Now, there's still people that have, you know, Horseman and others, but...
So what you're doing is giving them an opportunity. You may put out three or have different vendors out there and saying, here, this is what they're offering. If you want to participate, this is what's coming out. This is what you can do, it'll be paid on the doctor for your check.
Right, and then the employee could decide if it's a 403B plan or 401K or whatever it is. And they could decide, you know, what they wanted to do, who, how they wanted to invest that money.
But if you can reduce them.
Yeah, reduce the number, it'll be more manageable.
Well, and it'll also be less cost to employees because there'll be more of a bulk rate. In other words, they get a better deal because...
More money for the bus.
Because there's less fees, because each fee, there's more fees together.
What you might look at is looking at your current vendors and seeing what the fees are for them and see if it's advantageous for them to go to another vendor for a bulk rate.
Right, and that's what some folks did on insurance, you know. They felt like they could get a better, you know, more life insurance for less cost. And, you know, that was an opportunity for them and it didn't, you know, it didn't cost us anything. It's just a, you know, advantage to employees.
Basically, all you're asking is just permission to put this RFP out there, but there's no obligation to if we decide to do it or not to.
That's right.
I make a motion to allow the RFP for the retirement plans as to go out.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Are there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much, very much. Autumn, I think, I should talk a little bit about Read to Be Ready instead of our 90% goals.
Okay. I'll have data for you from our university screening next month. We're currently in that window. And then I also wanted to share, we have sent several teachers and our Read to Be Ready coaches to the Read to Be Ready winter convening. And they're focusing on writing for this training. And they'll come back and redeliver that. They've been redelivering to all of our K-3 teachers. Well, I should say first through third teachers, because pre-K and kindergarten teachers are working on another topic in their professional development. But they're redelivering that content, they're working with teachers in classrooms to see about their interpretation of the Read to Be Ready. So, we've got some good things going on there.
And then just one other item of business in addition to Dibrel's reward school status is we've completed our audit, we had a school nutrition federal audit this week. So, they came in on Monday and were supposed to be here until today. But actually left a day early, which is always good. That's always a good sign.
Got those auditors on the road, yeah.
So, we had a good result on that. There were no physical findings in the audit. There were some procedural findings that we'll have to correct, like the, our wellness policy that we have with coordinated school health. There's not a way to measure that policy for school nutrition, so we'll have to develop a measurement that we have to do once every three years. You know, there were some things about safety in the cafeterias, like storage of food has to be so high off the ground and some of the shelving was not that high. You know, so we have to make some adjustments there. But the only thing that we'll probably have to adjust for before next school year is the à la carte items. You know, we had, there's a federal guideline about how you, you know, ensure that you're breaking even or on à la carte items. And we changed the pricing on that last year and we may have to change the pricing on that this year as well to make sure we continue to break even. But as far as, you know, any physical, you know, things that we would have to pay back money or things that we would have a physical finding, there was none. And they were very appreciative and, you know, said it went very smoothly. That's why they were able to get out here a day early. And so, when the final report comes in, we'll get that into the packet. But just wanted to report that to you.
And we're still okay with our federal funding for the school breakfast so much?
For CP, right now, yes. But this is the year that we have to recalibrate. So, we're waiting on, you know, regs from federal government to see what that percentage will be. But we've been trying to lay back and store and make sure we can stay with that program. So, but that'll be coming in the next few months.
Well, it'll also be a political connection to that. In addition to the administrative, we can allow Dr. Dolls and Bobby to take care of the administrative side. But on the political side, we're going to have to pretty well mobilize the community because this will be in Congress, it will be something that will be debated. And, you know, I think it'd be just an unmitigated disaster if we lost the CP. I just don't think we can afford to do that. But it has been talked about in USDA and some people in Congress have talked about taking that benefit away. So, we just need to keep an eye on it.
We'll have to stay with it. That's it, Mr. Chairman, for operations.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just add something, a little footnote on Ms. Turner's report on Read to Be Ready, early childhood reading, emphasis to 20 minutes a day. We've got our three super readers from West Elementary, Hickory Creek, and Bobby Ray Memorial. They wrote in the Christmas parade. And those are Haven Hasty back in the backseat on the far side from West, Lincoln Sane is seated up front, and Lauren Sparkman from Bobby Ray. She's the little girl on this side. And the idea here was to kind of celebrate those who excel in reading. So, I asked the principals and the instructional coordinators at the schools, do you identify who your super readers are? These can be the ones with the most AR points, the most improved, you know, the ones trying the hardest. And these are the ones that were identified. But one thing that was obvious is that they did have parental support. And parental support is vital to, because, Autumn, as you know. By the way, the little, little girl from Bobby Ray, Lauren Sparkman, I was kind of a captive audience for about an hour in that grade. And she, these students know what's going on in their schools. And she had some concerns about the construction project. She was worried it was going to take away the playground.
Oh, no.
So, she was upset and I said, no, we're going to make sure you have a playground. But that, that, these children sometimes know what's going on in your schools. And you might be surprised, but...
That's good feedback.
So, by the way, our Read 20 Minutes a Day won first place in the parade.
Okay.
Of course.
I got to ride in the coolest car in the parade.
Well, it was, it was a nice day. It was a good one, good weather.
Bobby, may I mention one more thing? I'm sorry.
Go around.
I just wanted to tell the board that, or remind the board that we have our engagement review coming up for Warren County High School for our accreditation work that they're currently in the midst of. They're doing a really great job. They've worked on it on November 21st when we had that stockpile day. They've got plans for January 3rd. All of their teachers are coming together, they're working in committees. They're really doing that accreditation work, that self-analysis, very, very well. But I wanted to let you know the dates. The external review team will be here February 15th and 16th. That's when they'll be in the school and we'll have meetings and we'll be working with the different teams. Our lead evaluator came in and met with the high school on November 21st. And I asked her if she would be interested in maybe some board members participating in an interview or two. And she said that she would if one or two of you might be available. So, we may be reaching out to some of you to see if you do have availability for one of those two days.
What's that, what's that?
I second the nomination.
We, I don't think we've even had a chance.
I've kind of been there, done there. It's already been talked about.
I think, Chairman, we'll do whatever we can to help, whatever it takes.
Whatever it takes.
Thank you very much. I'll be in touch.
Okay, Mr. Zach.
Okay, we got a couple of items, policy actions on first reading this evening. And the first one is EBHA, Open Use of District Recreational Facilities. The preamble to this policy recognizes that the school facilities are public facilities, they're built at public expense, and should be made available to the greatest possible extent and the greatest practical extent for purposes, non-school purposes that benefit the community, such as recreational activities. So, but there have to be some rules and regs on this, including no use of tobacco products, no alcoholic beverages, drugs, and illegal substances, firearms, what you might expect. But Robin, do you have anything you want to say about this?
Like you said, it's basically, we already have, you know, some folks that use, like Hickory Creek has Peace Project, and we have lots of deals that people use. But this will help us be able to, you know, have signage and things and have opening and closing times and also some rules. closing times, and also some rules, so that we can encourage people to use it, but also let them know that if they're not using it in accordance with the rules and the law, that we can not let that person come back to use it again, so, and it also will help us, we're working on a grant, um, and this would be another way to help support that grant.
This is a brand-new policy.
It is a brand-new policy. We do still have our use of facilities, um, that covers like rental, uh, uh, facilities and things like that, gyms and cafeteria.
I said, that's what I had in mind, I didn't see changes in this, I'm like...
Right, this is more, this is outdoor.
Outside, yeah.
We're, we're applying for a grant, we're walking trails at Centertown, and Eastside, and Morrison, Morrison, and, uh, so, uh, so that goes with, with that.
And having the signage up with the rules and regulations as well, uh, Bobby, we had a little issue over at Bobby Ray a couple of years ago, the football field, and people thought it'd be a great place to sell beer.
Yeah.
So, you know, not a good idea, not a good idea, so...
Well, that kind of open facility.
Yeah, we're not that open.
No.
What constitutes, um, being able to apply for a grant for the walking trails at those particular schools, how do they qualify?
Well, it was, uh, it was, uh, through Health Services, one, and we kinda looked at, you know, the schools that didn't have one now, and I think, you know, Urban Colleges got one, and most of the, the other ones had one, the Centertown, and, and the other three didn't, so that's how they used it at that time, but, you know, if another one comes up, we would, you know, we'd block that one.
And also, the community focus, too, like, are there other places to go in that proximity to other places to go and have outdoor recreational activities?
Well, no further discussion, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna move for adoption in first reading of EVHA, Open Use of District Outdoor Recreational Facilities.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Motion carries.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, uh, second item on first reading is, um, policy ED, Student Transportation Management, and you can see, uh, much of the first page of the old policy is deleted, so, Robin and Bobby, you have anything you wanna say about ED?
Is, is this just to be in compliance with the new law that takes effect in January? We have to have a transportation supervisor named, uh, in our district, which will be Mr. Martin, he has to have certain training, there has to be a specific complaint process, of course, we have to have the numbers on the buses, so that they can, folks can call if they have a safety concern or complaint, um, basically, that's it, that we still have some stuff in about the buses, the fleets, and obviously, we're gonna make sure that they stay maintained, drivers have to be properly trained, and, um, records kept on that and screened, and then records, we have, have to be kept. But the main change is about the, um, transportation supervisor and the complaint system, of course, we'll be continuing to work with Durham, but this will be a, a layer that's added here at Central Office to oversee that more specifically than just having it come into the director.
Uh, Mr. Jeff, like Robin said, Mr. Jeff Martin is our district liaison, he's been to the state training, and the complaint process, the way we kinda laid this out was, uh, we didn't wanna have two numbers for people to call, uh, one here and one there, so, uh, Durham, there's an eight-hundred number on the back of each bus, if it's not there, it will be, they call that number, it goes to Durham School Services, they do the investigation of what went on, they have to provide Mr. Martin, uh, a, in writing, uh, synopsis of the investigation and of what was done within twenty-four hours of, of that being done, or the investigation has to be within twenty-four hours, and the report within forty-eight hours, so...
And actually, Jeff, we talked this morning, he's got some forms that he's gonna use, that he's gonna, that'll be in a, a one-page synopsis report form to send to Bobby, obviously, if there needs to be additional information, he'll attach that, but just to make it, um, easy to read, make sure everything's done the same way, um, and, and basically, all these rules came pretty much specifically from state law, I mean, those are the, those are the timeframes and the processes that, that set out specifically in the statute.
When we first learned about this law, we thought we, or I thought, anyway, we were gonna have to go out and hire somebody to do this, but fortunately, we can just, we can get onboard personnel, Mr. Martin, to do, double duty, and that's, so, it saved us, uh, saved us, uh, the staff salary, so... So, we're, we're gonna have some information on the district website, uh, to, to talk about the complaint process, and...
We could, yeah, we'll get that out there, we can get that out there, boy.
Okay. Well, that's, that sounds good, well, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna move for adoption on first reading of policy ED, Student Transportation Management.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, short report this evening, Mr. Chairman, I sent one item on second reading, uh, policy DJD, Expenses and Reimbursements, and we covered this on first reading, and, uh, Bobby, you and Robin, have anything you wanna say about?
Just to get in line with, uh, federal, the federal audit.
Okay. Well, all right, Mr. Chairman, I'm moving for adoption on second reading, uh, policy DJD, Expenses and Reimbursements.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And that completes the business for curriculum achievement. Bye, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Zech. Mr. Jones.
Facility Resource Management Committee met, uh, prior to this meeting, along with, uh, the, um, Education Committee from the, um, the commission, uh, major discussion on the building projects at, uh, at West and Bobby Ray, and, uh, I guess at this time, do we need to make a motion, do we need to prove that, or else? We, uh, I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, that we would recommend that Upland Design move forward with their plans, uh, for the, um, the fixes at, uh, West and Bobby Ray renovations.
Okay, have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, uh, Mr. Scott, you said something earlier about maybe having to change the meeting for January.
Yes, sir, I, I have to be at a, at a State Department meeting out of state, serving on committee, uh, on the twenty-fifth, if, if it's agreeable, everybody, we can move it up a week to the eighteenth, uh, that would help me, if not, we can adjust however it's best for you.
I make a motion that we, uh, move it up to the eighteenth of January for our next meeting, uh, first meeting of twenty-eighteen.
I have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Are there any, at this time, are there any other business to come before the board?
First, uh, this is not any business, but I just still wanna reiterate about how I am proud of Upland for coming up with those, uh, designs, and, uh, just unbelievable to me that they could come up with something like that, that we can use, hopefully, and get those to schools, right?
Donnie had some, Donnie helped, Donnie called in.
Well, Donnie helped out with that, and, you know, we, they, Alan's met with the principals and tried to get his, you know, all the feedback and put that in, and then, Mr. Minnet and I met this week with them, and, you know, we were right up to the day, that's why I was hoping to get it out to you earlier, but, uh, we've, you know, been going back and forth, I think they did a, a really good job with the concept, so, we're just hoping the engineers come in and, you know, agree with that and don't...
Say, everything's good.
Yeah, it's, yes, I'm hoping that, but I appreciate y'all being willing to take a look at that and work with us, and, you know, I think it's coming again, so, I appreciate that.
Well, we'd like to encourage everybody, the basketball team is doing great, uh, if you only go to one tomorrow night, is Silent Night, but also, at halftime, uh, football cheerleaders, my daughter's team, which are USCA winners, uh, is combining with, uh, some of the special ed kids for a, uh, sparkle group, sparkle group cheer, uh, for the halftime performance, and it'll be, it'll be great, it'll be great to see, so, and, hope y'all can come out there.
And we are working on the sound system, I know you've probably heard feedback on that, we've had an amplifier that has gone bad, and we're trying to get parts in, but we're doing the best we can, so, we're, we're, just know we're working on it.
Okay.
And that's at Charlie Dalton Gym?
Yes, uh-huh.
Yeah, yeah, yes, yes.
I'm gonna do what you're gonna do.
We're doing all we can do.
What, what, we split, what, about seventy thousand years ago?
I can't remember, a couple of years ago, but it, it's, it's, the amplifier's got a part that needs to be replaced, and...
But it did get better.
It got better.
It got...
Well, we've had...
Incrementally better.
Well, we've had, yeah, but we're still...
We're sitting in the wrong place, man.
No, it's, it's, we just, we're working on it, that's all I'm saying.
You're kinda like the nosebleed section, that's where you go.
That's a little bit of a second, it goes all the way up the top, I have to scramble up those straps, oh, man.
Do I have a motion to the chair?
You're almost at it.
Uh, uh, what, what, uh, our student advisory, uh, gave us a report on the sounds of the season, it's fundraiser for, uh, the Warren County High School Choir, and I just wanna mention one again, that's December twelve, uh, two shows, six and eight P.M., tickets are ten dollars each, and that money will help underwrite the, uh, travel costs of the select choir to the candlelight procession, uh, in Orlando, uh, a very worthy but expensive proposition, and also, uh, the band's Christmas concert, Monday, December eleventh, six P.M. at the Beautiful Park Theater, just wanna get on the pod.
Motion to the chair. Where, Jerry?
You go.